As things have evolved and the importance of some of the items that we have on our agenda for this evening, and so that people can watch remotely if that's, if they are able to. Barbara Scotto is participating remotely because she is unable to attend in person. And so all votes will be taken by roll call tonight. And we're gonna, are we doing consent agenda first or are we getting started? Why don't we just go ahead and get started with Dr. Jett and we'll come back to consent agenda after.
Let me talk real quickly about the left field OPM contract that we're going to need to approve. It's basically, we've selected Left Field to be the owner's project manager. Tony negotiated the contract with them. Maybe, actually, you could speak a little bit more, but very short.
Very quickly.
Very short, unless somebody...
Unless people have questions.
Does anybody have a question about the owner's project? Yes.
Did Left Field leave us?
They're back. And they worked very well. Yes.
I thought they left.
No, no. No, there was a hiatus and they actually did a yeoman's work on the CM at Risk, which I was part of that process and they were excellent in helping us.
Okay, so I move that we accept the contract.
For the consent agenda, what do you want to ask of us?
And our pass record, so also our minutes from Library 27.
A second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Oh, we have to do roll call.
Roll call. Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Dr. Bromovich?
Yes.
Ms. Monopoly?
Yes.
Ms. Dickoff?
Yes.
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Chalovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Promin?
I'm standing.
Okay.
So we'll hold the proprietary one until next week or do you want to do it first?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yes, Dr. Swanee Jett is also director, what's the official title? Director of Public Health for Brookline. And thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate it.
All right. Good evening. So I'm basically here to give you an update on what's going on with the coronavirus and things that we probably can expect in the future. So as of yesterday, we had two positive cases. I have been tracking, I think I'm up to 20 potential, as opposed to last Friday when we only had about five that I was tracking. So it's anticipated every three to four days it would exponentially grow. So you could do the numbers. In approximately 30 days, we're probably looking at somewhere about 1,000 cases. That's if we don't do any preventive measures. And so I'm urging not only for the schools to do something, but the overall community to do something to restrict movement of all citizens. That includes going to make simple runs to the grocery stores. I would start making essential purchases now. I will, I've already started within my own agency counseling meetings that were unnecessary, that did not have to do with a government body. Thank you.
So in meeting with town leaders, including Mel Kleckner, town administrator, Dr. Jett, the police and fire chiefs the last couple of days, as everyone knows, this situation has been rapidly developing. As recently as this morning, we're anticipating a closure for tomorrow while we continue planning for a longer-term closure. Just in the past hour, some things have changed in terms of understanding the potential roadmap from here. And it's clear that town leaders need to work together to develop a comprehensive approach town-wide to limit the exposure and limit the possible spread of the illness and the virus. Because of that guidance, I am now calling for and will put into place cancellation of school starting tomorrow and going through March 30th, or going until March 30th. As I said, this is a recent development. We'll continue to develop guidelines on how to continue learning and connecting with our students during this closure. The town and school department will also continue developing comprehensive plans to support the community and limit the spread of infection. The decision to close schools tomorrow through March 30th is in, until March 30th is an attempt to slow and spread the virus. It will be effective if the community also takes steps to practice self-isolation, monitoring for any symptoms, and aborting large gatherings. We need all community members to do their part. We realize very much that a decision to close schools has a significant impact with far-reaching ramifications for our community, and we understand the disappointment, frustration, and uncertainty that it may create. However, our first priority is the health and safety of our students, our families, and our staff. We also realize that children and families rely on their school as part of the broader social safety net. Many students receive important nutrition, health, and social service support from our schools. We are aware of the impact of interrupting these services and are actively working with the town to provide alternatives during the longer-term closure of our schools as it will be necessary. I'm also personally committed to working closely with our union partners to ensure the safety and health of all of our staff. We've also already, I've just, I've, Desko and Shuboh, President of BU, and I have had a couple of conversations and are aligned and working together to make sure we get good answers to support our staff, our students, and our schools. At this point, I can take questions from the committee. I do want to just assure you that this is rapidly developing and, but we will, I think, continue to see, we're already seeing some schools, many schools are taking sort of a two-phase approach, closing now to do cleaning and then perhaps, and then considering a longer closure. Other school systems, including I believe Newton and Wellesley, have already decided to do a two-week closure, which we will do as well.
And so I concur with this decision, but I want to make one piece of information well-known so people understand. When I begin to look at the data that occurred in China, only 1% of kids actually carried the disease. Majority of the people that were affected were in their 50s. It ranged from 30 to 69 years' age. Only 2% contracted the disease even after the age of nine. So the major people that were impacted had cardiovascular disease, diabetes, respiratory problems already. You can name the amount of issues that had occurred. It was not just in elderly people as is reported on the news. It was a broader scope, and these tests were done on 55,000 people. So that gives you some type of idea of what impacted. Italy, within the first time they first started having cases, it was around 380 at the first day. By day 14, they was at 10,000.
Questions in the committee? Clarifications?
I think this is actually a question for Dr. Jett. I concur with what you're proposing and all that. I'm just wondering, for those parents who have to go to work and don't have childcare, single-parent families, could, could we, what would be the effect if we were to maybe ask extended day to take groups of those kids in separate rooms in the school? I don't know. Or would that just defeat the purpose? And it's a tough question. I don't know...
It's a tough question. I really don't have the answer to that, but I think what's going to happen over the next several days is anybody in any surrounding town or city, they will close. And employees will be asked to stay at home.
Well, that's my sense, too. I've already heard from my son.
Yeah. And the key is, is to restrict people's movement. The reason why China was so successful is because they began to lock down cities. They actually had people to shut in for greater than 14 days. It was actually a 30-day period to a month and a half. I'm starting to see some of those people trickle back into the U.S. from China even today. I'm still having people show up from Italy. We never stopped the movement of people across the world. And so I received a call last night that somebody traveled to Connecticut, a bunch of friends, and their friend tested positive, went to Africa, Africa called it. So this is global. And until we actually stop people from traveling outside the state, outside of Brookline, it's the only way we're going to contain it.
So I had a question about the two-week timeframe, and I've heard that the incubation period is two weeks, or that there's some magic number about two weeks, but how, how is it that we're not just going to have someone who might be affected not knowing that they're affected, they've then affected other people, and so after two weeks, you know, that person goes to school not knowing they're affected? How is two weeks actually effective for anything at all?
So, good question. So how do you break the chain of transmission? Let's say the incubation period is four to seven days. Let's take norovirus hypothetically. Most people have symptoms after three or four days. You send them home, you would shut down the facility, double that time period. So it couldn't be reintroduced. The problem with closing the schools for a 14-day period, and if nobody else does it around the surrounding communities and you do reopen, then you possibly could be reintroducing it again and have to go through the process again. So at some point in that, in this 14-day time period, it gives us time to see what is actually going on. If it peaks, if it doesn't, then you just make the decision to extend it longer. So you usually want to do double that time period to make sure you cover that reintroduction, reintroduction of disease into the community, and you make sure it doesn't occur.
So are we saying that this is a two-week closure that we're reevaluating in two weeks? Or we're saying, you know, I think that, is there a date that we are...
So we will constantly be reevaluating, and, you know, let's say tomorrow we have four potential cases, but in two weeks we have 100. It wouldn't seem logical to reopen. So, I mean, I think today is prudent to make the decision that's before us, and I think we can reevaluate each day as it goes. And we will constantly be meeting and be inundated with new data.
Say that, you know, just, I just reiterate that, that this is rapidly developing. Very few of us have experienced something like this in our lifetimes, you know, or in here, in this area, obviously. And we do not know what the next, you know, day, week, or weeks are going to present to us. So we do have to respond to what happens. And that may mean further closures, but we're not there yet, and we can't be there yet. So I know what that may cause uncertainty, uncertainty to folks, but these are uncertain times. So that's a difficult message to deliver, but I think it's the truthful one. A formal announcement will be going out to all families and, all families and staff later tonight about the closure. As I said, we are anticipating just closing for tomorrow while then putting in places, putting in plans for a likely, you know, a longer stoppage that would start next week, but working with Dr. Jett and Mr. Kleckner have decided, as I said, to close until the 30th at this point.
So just to get on the logistics, there'll be email going out to all families and all staff tonight?
Sorry, emails and phone calls, just like we do all cancellations.
Like we got the other day.
Absolutely, yep.
Now, okay. And then possibly on Monday, or there may be some announcements about possible help or food or care? We don't know.
We need a little bit of time to, I mean, I don't, I'm, I have no intention of getting ahead of the town on any announcements, so I can at least just focus and speak to the schools. I do know that, you know, town departments led by Mr. Kleckner are working on more comprehensive plans for, you know, to support the community. Okay? But he will have to make those announcements at the time that those are ready to announce.
And just to be clear, all staff are to stay home except for central office, or what, how is that for schools? How is that working? Will there be anybody at a school? Will anybody be there tomorrow morning to greet people to say it's closed? Didn't hear the message.
So, just so you know, this morning, Principal Dinkso and myself were both at Lincoln. Nobody showed up, so the messaging looked quite well. Okay?
That's a good sample.
We know how to cancel school. We've done it before.
Okay, that's good.
Not for longer paid time. We, I still need to just work that out in the next couple of hours, honestly. I would like to give staff the opportunity to come in. I mean, let me just explain this a little bit, like, our school buildings at this point are safe, okay? The, meaning, you know, it's okay for me to go in there, get something, and leave, okay? We are closing because of the impact and the likelihood of spreading the virus or disease further, and want to limit that, we want to limit the spread. And also because the information we are getting is less reliable than it was a few days ago because the reports and the follow-up are beginning to slow down because there are more and more of them, okay? And because we can't have complete confidence in, you know, the numbers of students, sorry, families or communities who may be affected, we can't know what's, you know, what the potential spread is, okay? It is okay for people to be in the buildings, like it was today. It would be okay for people to be in tomorrow. And I would like to give staff the opportunity to go and get materials and things they may need. Part of that is related to work we're going to need to do with BU around developing any plans for, you know, continuing any learning or, I should say, guidance on learning, okay? And then also, also continuing some connection between our schools and families, so...
And you can't do it all today, but down the road, will we address the hourly wage earners that are staffed?
Yes, absolutely, without doubt. That is, first, first and foremost, for example, you know, today's, today's cancellation link is considered like a snow day, like I said, okay? And on those days are, you know, hourly workers are paid for that time, and so I don't want to get ahead of any conversations at all here, so that's why...
I don't wish, I just...
Yeah, I don't make commitments, but, and that's, and that's why I said in the statement I read, that we will work with our union partners to make sure that, you know, safety and security of our staff is important and also all necessary agreements are addressed.
Ms. Wolfdeckhoff and then Ms. Chalovsky. Barbara, we, Susan was going to go first and then, then you can go next, Barbara, and then we'll hear from Helen.
So first of all, thank you for all of the hours and, and care and attention that you two have put in, both of your staffs have put in, and all the teachers as well. There's sort of a lot that everyone's handling right now, their own, processing their own emotions with their own families and doing this very important job. So thank you for that and for the late nights. A couple of things. One thing that strikes me is that at 6:30, I'm wondering if it would be possible to send out a short note, like ASAP, to people that just says, "School's closed tomorrow," and through the 30th, and a longer email will come tonight because people need to make arrangements, like now. So that would be one suggestion, if we could do like a two-part email. Another suggestion would be if there are a set of things that are getting considered that you don't have, but are in the mix, I think it might be helpful to reassure the community that they are in the mix, that they, so, for example, we have children with food insecurity. It's important that the community understands, from what I understand of what you just said, that we are, you know, working, that we're aware, you know, we're aware of that, working on that. We have children with special needs who will face regression without services as they do over the summer. We are working, aware of it, working on, you know, what can, what might be done. You know, children whose parents need to continue to work and don't have the option of staying home with their children. You know, there, if there are three, four, or five things that you are working on and hope to have, you know, better answers, you know, early next week, I think it would just be helpful for people to understand that, not in the first email, in the second email. The first email has to go out sooner rather than, you know, hourly wage earners, you know, we're working with the union. I just, I think that some of these things, it's important for the community and the parent community and the rest of the community to know that they're actively getting worked through, if that's, okay.
That is definitely...
Can I just ask one last question and then I'll stop, but is there any, what is the plan to sort of circle back with the school committee about those plans? Because my sense is there might be budget implications, there might be all kinds of things. We don't have a meeting till next Thursday, so I'm wondering if we're going to need a meeting early next week.
Has anyone heard whether, you know, we, Suzanne and I had talked about the possibility of doing this meeting, you know, if we get to the point where we're trying to have, not have meetings where everyone's getting together, and even the amount of passing of microns back and forth is alarming in context of the discussion. But I wonder with respect to open meeting law, if, if there will be...
For the moment, if five of us are in the room, it's a meeting, or, you know...
So perhaps we could...
We, I mean, there's a capital meeting anyway, right? And so you're already going to have a few, oh, that's Thursday.
Thursday.
So, no, but it might be worth seeing if five of us will be willing to come Monday morning.
And maybe we should go ahead, we wouldn't be able to do Monday morning.
This is definitely an emergency meeting. Yeah.
But I don't know if there's new information by Monday.
I would, well, but there, I guess my point is, is that there might need to be a school committee vote or a school committee something in order for new information to go out, so that would be my suggestion.
And does Monday feel like the right time for that?
Yes, I think it does, yeah. I think, I think we'll have...
So we'll go ahead and do that.
Wait, wait, Monday, right time for a meeting or right time for more information?
A meeting to talk about more information.
Just where we are, a status, more of a status update, if you need school committee votes for anything, which you may.
That might, I think Tuesday's better. I think, I think Tuesday's better.
Tuesday morning?
Yeah, we'll communicate, you know, between now and then to, to you, of course, all of you, of course, but also the larger community, but, but I, I think organizing ourselves for a meeting on Monday actually...
We already had a plan for Tuesday morning.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Anyway, we don't need to do that right now, I just wanted to...
One thing, I'd like to say one more thing, and then Jess, if you have something to say might be helpful, okay? I mean, if you are, I do want to remind folks that our teachers, our staff, our paraprofessionals, our administrators, all of our employees, okay, our district-wide leaders as well, are also experiencing this as well, and have the same anxieties as our families who live in Brookline, or families who live in Boston, other communities, okay? And just to really, for our community to really appreciate that, that as teachers, as educators, as leaders in the district, same old worries, anxieties concern our families, our communities are doing different things, are doing similar things as well, and just to really be conscious of that in communications, in expectations, and in care. You know, I've certainly heard rightfully from so many of our staff about the concern of their health and their wellness, as well as, and, you know, they, they put their students first every single day, but I just do, do want to be, acknowledge the care and concern and anxiety that they feel as well, and that's another important consideration for all of us, so. Jess, yeah?
Oh, yes, Barbara, Barbara, did you want to go ahead and go, or do you want to wait?
Yes, I, I just, my daughter is teaching, is a teacher in Wellesley, and when I spoke to her this afternoon, she talked about the fact that tomorrow, I think, I'm not exactly sure about the details, but the teachers might be getting better to talk, getting together to talk about what students could do while they were out of school. And she talked about teachers having websites where I'm not, I'm not, she was not indicating that they were going to teach the children, but that they might put up things online that children could go to or make suggestions for a variety of things. And it seemed to me to be a good idea, and I just wonder if that is anything we might want to encourage.
So I want to thank Superintendent Lummis for the amount of communication, candid, constructive, collaborative, really think it's working for this partnership. And, you know, the educators who are here, there are so many complexities, as you're all alluding to, they have children, they have elderly parents, they have travel, they cross buildings, they cross towns, they, they cross all kinds of settings, they have spouses who work in hospitals, et cetera. So we're really committed and dedicated to this larger struggle to make up for lost time in, in the service of the common good, committed to our students, committed to one another, committed to the families, not just in Brookline, but really nationally and internationally. So what, what we are confident about is that safety comes first, right? Prevention is first. We are, we are late according to most of the folks that seem to be highly regarded nationally and internationally. And so that's why we urgently say first, safety, and then we'll talk about some of the complexities of, around equity and time and et cetera, around the learning piece. So that's, that's the order that I think is appropriate. Six feet of separation, right, means that you cannot get teachers together to talk about any teaching and learning and still be honoring the urgency of prevention. So that's why I separate the two.
Ms. Chalovsky and then Mr. Promin, you're good? Okay, Mr. Promin.
I just wanted to add one other potential suggestion along the lines of what Ms. Dickoff was raising about different categories of concerns that community members will have to be addressed in a follow-up email. I think it also is worth considering having a question and answer page on the web where parents and other community members will have a resource to just have a better understanding of how each issue's being handled, even at...
FAQs?
Right. Yes, FAQs and...
We had, we had, this is, I don't know if anyone will find the humor in this or their irony in this, but we actually had created a, for staff today, a really, really well-crafted, based on some input we got from Michelle Gordon, who's here, and Des Wintershubo, a really great webpage for the staff in our, in our internal system, really by category and, you know, of different real issues that they could go to and get all the information they wanted to. At this point, most of that information is out of date, and that was done about five hours ago. So absolutely, Mr. Promin, it's a, it's a great idea. We do already have from our webpage, a, from our homepage, numerous links, various obvious links to all the information we've already shared publicly, all our, you know, communication with families and some updates and guidance, and a whole resource list of, you know, safety and security measures that's already existence, and we can also add on FAQ as well. But those, that information is all available. You can't miss the very large banner on the top of the website and also in the news section there, but, but we'll continue to update information.
Jess, Jess had a question.
Purely clarification, because if I was confused, I'm afraid, you might want to just, the word likely closure was used, but the Twitter account says till the 27th. It's coming out, so I just want to make sure you get a chance to...
We are closed.
We are closed, we are closed, yeah.
We are closed.
We originally expected to be announcing a likely closure that we would finalize over the weekend, okay? And this is, meaning, meaning, and so, but what we are announcing now, very clearly, is that the public schools will be closed until the 30th of March.
Yes, Ms. Chalovsky, did you have something else, and then Ms. Monopoly?
So that's right now on our website, what you just said? Twitter I don't have, but, and many people don't have Twitter, so it's...
That pops up when you go on over.
Thank you. Perfect. That's great. Thank you for that.
And it says the 27th because the 30th is a Monday.
There's a big white...
So we will re, we will hope to reopen back on the 30th. As of now, we are closed through... Okay, Ms. Monopoly.
I just wanted to reiterate and make sure that it makes, some of these items make the list of the follow-up email. I think we clearly heard plans for, possibilities for future learning in the meantime of a closure, food insecurity, I think I heard, I know that's a big concern, so. And then third, and I think this is something for the town as a, as a whole, to think about alternatives for, for families who are working and cannot provide supervision. I think those are the three big things that I wanted to make sure that at some point, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, or that we indicate that those are areas of concern. I'm not sure. I feel like in, we received a large number of emails today and a lot of concerns came up, and so I just want to make sure that we're covering sort of all of the, the big issues. Am I, am I missing, are we missing anything?
Will we still be having, does, will the task force remain in place?
The task force is just beginning.
And then do we, as it stands now, what is the school's involvement on the task force? And does it make, perhaps it would make sense now that we're closing to have a liaison from the school committee on the task force, or?
Oh, sorry. So, in terms of involvement, we couldn't be, the school tomorrow couldn't be more involved. We, we have the most people there at each meeting, and our concerns are being addressed, you know, very openly and collaboratively among the group. In terms, in terms of membership, that's not my call, that's maybe Mr. Kletner's or Mr. Jet, Dr. Jett's, but I don't know if you want to speak to that, but.
The task force pretty much is the superintendent, myself, Mr. Kletner, chief of police, fire.
Buildings.
Buildings.
Buildings, library.
No.
No, they're, they're, they're the town, manager of key town departments and staff.
If I may, we do have a member of the select board sitting in the audience, Raul Fernandez, and he said that he could speak for a little bit as to what the select board is doing on this effort. If you want to come up, Raul.
Thanks. I didn't come dressed for the occasion. So, I know, I know. So, I'd be happy to, sure. Can I take this one or now we're, now we're exchanging likes?
I know, it's really, I'm really-
I'll get some.
Especially these two of you.
No, we're okay.
So, ever so briefly, just want to commend the superintendent for the action being taken. You know, this is the, the right step at the right time, and, you know, as Dr. Jett mentioned previously, this is something that I know the task force, the select board, I imagine members of the school committee are going to be constantly talking about, meeting about, and, and making decisions about what's happening going forward. It is, you know, we're going to have a select board meeting on Tuesday. This will be a big topic of discussion. More guidance is coming out also for boards, committees, and commissions. You'll be getting that likely through the town administrator, Mr. Kletner. So, know that as well. I know there's a lot of people with questions about what about all these meetings, how are these going to happen, questions about town meeting. Please just be a little bit patient while, while we get that out. I do, I do want to say it's important that we work together during these times and that as a town, we speak with one voice so that there's not misinformation, miscommunication. So, you won't hear any announcements from me tonight. You'll hear that directly from the board as a, as a whole, and also directly especially from our town administrator, Mr. Kletner, other than the announcements that you've heard tonight from Ms. Lummis and Dr. Jett. So, just know that, that, that we're working together, although folks don't always see the work that's happening, it is happening, and that, that, you know, for, for me, one of the things that's really important is that we be as communicative as possible, and that's one area that I'd certainly like to see us be much more communicative with, with the community. So, I think you can expect to see that happening too.
As we have logistically, so is there, so is, if people have questions, you were saying like staff could still get into the buildings for logistics, you know, students at the, if there are students who didn't anticipate that we might be closing, who have belongings that are at the schools, are our school buildings closed? Do we-
They would, and this is not, I, I needed to speak to Ms. Winters, Dr. Winterschubow about a couple of things, okay? No, buildings are not open tomorrow for students or families, okay? They may be open for staff, but again, I need to, need to talk that through, okay? So, but, but that's TBD, so at this point, our buildings are all closed tomorrow.
Ms. Charlefsky.
And this is to Dr. Jett. There's many daycares here in town in nursery schools and private schools. Are we giving them advice on this? Is this, and many of those same families are our families, so I, I just don't know where, where that will be. I'm wondering what the advice is.
So, our website has a lot of guidance. We have actually met with the daycares.
Oh, okay, great.
Daycare directors. We were actually having meetings and explaining preparedness and in close contact, in proximity. And a resident of one of the buildings didn't want us to do that anymore and complained and, and posted on Facebook. So, at this time, we have discontinued providing that advice in person, and we're trying to direct people to our town website and sign up for alerts, and, and that's the best way to stay in tune. The other aspect that, you know, I'm very concerned about, as, as you probably well know, I'm a data geek by nature, and so I have been looking at the RNOT and the numbers for almost two to three weeks. And I'm, I'm just very concerned that, you know, we're closed to school, we still have kids that are moving. I saw a lot of them tomorrow today from another district. I see more people coughing and sneezing around the community, and I, I just don't think we have moved fast enough to stop the movement of people. So, you are correct, I am concerned about nursing homes, people in close contact. I am concerned about people in residential buildings. I'm concerned about kids moving, moving around because they, if they have the sniffles and they do have it, they are the carriers, two adults. But how do we prevent that without shutting off our borders, our arteries into Brookline? And that's the alarming part about it, and some very hard decisions will have to come in the future. The daycares and the youth, like I said, is, is one piece of the puzzle. I'm looking at the holistic approach for the entire community to keep everybody safe, and my job is to prevent one death. And so, that's, that's always been my concern. I've done this through five outbreaks now, and even traveled in person to Africa to prevent it from coming ashore. That's how much I've been dedicated in my career. My base, I do the same thing for military operations, and we have positive cases now. And so, I'm trying to figure out ways to mitigate it without interrupting people's daily lives, and that's going to be very difficult to do in the future.
So, tomorrow, I'm actually on a meeting, a conference call meeting with the advisory council for the Department of Early Education and Care that licenses these daycares. Should I be talking, well, I will definitely let them know that we're closed, and so are many other school districts, what are they going to be doing? And I guess what we'll do is maybe, I'll get that information to you so you can get it out when I-
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Are I saying outside anything on this topic? Yes, Dr. Charlefsky.
I have a few items. There's been concern in the community about the need to make up dates past the expected end date. Could you just confirm the statement, affirm the statement from Desi regarding when the school year is going to end, regardless of how this plays out?
Yes, so, sorry, thank you. So, but Desi has made, they have made one adjustment to the normal, normal operations. Any closures that happen before March 15th, so that means tomorrow, for example, or today for Lincoln, have to be made up. Any closures that happen between March 15th, which is Sunday, and June 1st, we have to make up up to a total of five for the whole year. So, I'm just going to do a little quick math here, okay? We had one snow day, we had, well, tomorrow's a closure for all schools except for Lincoln. That's two days we have, we have to make up. That means regardless of how many days were closed between March 15th and June 1st, we only have to make up three of those days.
Three more.
Three more of those days, okay? So, we'll make up a total of five closure, closure days, okay? That leaves us, I, I, we, we, we will, let's not, yeah, it'll be in the emails, may not be in today's email, okay?
One of the things we may want to discuss is whether we would want to make it up during April vacation and not have April vacation and close at the regular time. So, but that is something that we can, if we're open.
Yeah, we, we, there's-
Lots more to come.
Lots more to come.
But I guess that is a good point.
No, but the people should keep it in mind.
Maybe we shouldn't, in the email, maybe we shouldn't say this will be the final day of school.
Okay. We, we literally, Nancy Fitzpatrick's working getting this email out to all families right now, she may be, as we speak, okay? This email will be just about, you know, quick, about tomorrow, tomorrow and, and through March 27th, and it says more DTLs to come in this rapidly evolving situation. I think, I think you have some other questions?
Yeah, actually, well, or some statements and suggestions. I've been looking around at a large number of the software platforms that we regularly use in this district, and many of the corporations that support the platforms that we regularly subscribe to have substantially expanded their scope of services for school districts that use those services. So, I'd like to just give an example. Any school district that uses Google Classrooms in any way is now fully enabled to use all aspects of Google Street, including Google Conferencing, which involves video conferencing of, including up to 250 to 1,000 people. So, and Brainpops is something that's popular in some of the schools. They're substantially expanding some of the resources that they're making available to, to families, you know, being aware that children are going to be home. I think it would be worthwhile if the Office of Teaching and Learning could do a review of the current subscription services that we have, and also some of other popular services, and see what highly discounted or free expansions of services might be available to support the district as we move over to online learning, if that is going to be the objective. So, that's just one suggestion. I would like to state that I would like the, I would like to recommend to Dr. Jett and to the superintendent that we think about how coordination is going to work moving forward. Currently, we have been using an in-house staff-based task force model, but we are now in a situation in which we will have a highly scattered school community across the town, and I believe that there needs to be more points of entry into that coordination process. So, while nobody is suggesting that it should not be staff people only on the task force, I do believe that it is essential that every major townwide body have a designated liaison to the task force to communicate with their community, with their committees, to inform them and keep them apprised of what is going on, because to date, things have been very in-house. We've received a lot of communications expressing concern about how little people have known about what is happening in terms of planning for the future and decision-making in the present. And so, I would really like you to consider this. Building on that, I would like to suggest echoing the statement from the select board representative, that a clear communication strategy be put into place and that the school committee be apprised of how school community, school, I'm sorry, the PSB communications capacity is being leveraged for public health purposes in order to provide targeted information to multi-generational families and teachers and staff. I believe that we need an expanded communications capacity, we are just at the beginning. There's a lot that's going to be coming that we cannot fully anticipate, and having clear and open lines of commu, two-way communication will be quite essential. Lastly, I'm wondering if you can just give us a preview before we meet sometime next week to talk about, off the top of your head, some items that we might need to include in a budget for an emergency reserve fund transfer in order to pay for any kind of unanticipated expenditures that might result from these closures?
So, I can respond, and I'd be very brief for my response. First of all, thank you for those great suggestions. So, let me begin to explain to you, usually when you move to emergency operations, and the task force is made up of emergency operations and first responders that will be in the room, provide a technical, technical knowledge and how to prevent a disaster. That is usually not made up of citizens. We're going to open up our ELC, our ELC would be activated as of tomorrow, and it would go online on Monday. The key decisions will be made on how do we transport people to the hospital, those key areas, and that would be left up to the people that provide that service every day. So, I want to be clear, it's not to exclude anybody, it's to make sure we respond effectively to mobility or mortality, if it gets to that point. And, and I would just explain how in-depth that could be. So, I realized when the superintendent asked me earlier today, do you have an idea on how many potential cases that you might have? Because I have been inundated with emails to close the schools. I'm trying to respond to other citizens' needs from nursing homes, the daycares. I'm trying to effectively communicate what we should be doing and be the department here. I have not been able to track potential positive cases. The longer it delays for me to contact people, which I'm anticipating that it takes me about five days to get the information from the state, three to five, that's before they know. That means that a person came through airport, CDC might have got the manifest, they communicated to the state, the state put in the system, communicated to me, if I'm delayed in responding, and make sure they're quarantining a room in the community. And so, as of today, to help with some of that communication, we have hired a public relations person that would help streamline some of those questions. Open up an emergency operations center that allow all the department heads as part of the task force and first responders to respond to the issue that will probably come to a head within the next two weeks. What I urge the community to do is be patient, let the experts in our key positions do our job to effectively contain this disease, because if we don't, none of us have to worry about meeting. There won't be a meeting.
All right. So, I know that that's a lot for everybody to digest. We have a lot of, there will be more questions and more information in the, every day, it sounds like, and so we will make sure to keep the community involved, and we will be meeting as a school committee again on Tuesday. We can, it sounds like sometime Tuesday morning, so we will work out the details. Thank you for, for being here.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Dr. Jett.
Yeah, may I say we're, we're right.
Yes, so, I think we, I'd like to get a sense of the committee as to what we, else we would like to accomplish in our meeting tonight, and we have, so that's, that's where we're at.
So, I can tell you what we're prepared to do, which was really follow-through on the rest of the agenda. I do need, would like to have 15 minutes to get both the, the email announcement is ready to go, or maybe already be out, I'm not sure, but also make sure we do a call to all families and staff. I'd like 15 minutes to do that. But, but we're prepared, and this is, but this is up to the committee, we're prepared to, you know, work with the committee for, you know, as, as the agenda is set. Thank you, thank you, Jess.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, of course. Do you want, how about we do that? We do an update on the superintendent's search process while you have that time? Take that time? Yes, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move forward with an update on the superintendent's search process, and then we will see where we're gonna go from there.
I don't know. Should I go over there? Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Barbara, are you still with us?
Hello?
I just wanted to make sure we lost you. What, we're gonna take off today?
I was, I, yeah, I was, well, I didn't use.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Sure. So, thank you for your patience with the process, the, with the superintendent's search. It has been taking a little bit longer to get to this point than, than we would have hoped, but there was a lot of folks, particularly the Superintendent's Search Committee, Public Advisory Committee, that needed to weigh in properly, and we took the time to do that. As a number of you know, in the fall of 2019, shortly after the unexpected resignation of Superintendent Butt, the Brookline School Committee appointed four members of this body to a Superintendent's Search Committee to conduct a search for new superintendent of schools. As part of that search process, the Superintendent's Search Committee organized numerous community focus groups, a community-wide survey, and other activities in order to obtain feedback as to the characteristics and experience that the Brookline community felt the next superintendent should possess. In addition, the Superintendent's Search Committee selected 14 citizens, individuals, to serve along with the Superintendent's Search Committee on a Superintendent's Search Public Advisory Committee. We call that, we call that the SPAC. The SPAC's role was to review candidate credentials and conduct candidate interviews, as well as make a recommendation to the Superintendent's Search Committee. The SPAC was an incredibly group, diverse group, that included parents of current and former students, educators, alumni, a principal, the PSB Director of Human Resources, as well as a current Brookline High School student. Twenty-two candidates applied for the position of superintendent. While the candidate pool included many talented candidates from diverse backgrounds and having impressive credentials, the SPAC unanimously determined that it would be in the best interest of the public schools of Brookline to suspend the superintendent's, superintendent's search and reopen it in the fall of 2020, with the intention of having a new superintendent in place at the beginning of the 2021, 2022 academic year. The Superintendent's Search Committee supported that position and also voted in that, in that same vein. While the Superintendent's Search Committee regrets that our efforts this spring with the SPAC did not result in the hiring of a new superintendent, the Superintendent's Search Committee and the SPAC both felt that suspending the search until the fall would give the PSB sufficient time to refine the search strategy in a manner that will give the, the district the best chance of attracting the strongest possible candidate pool. In the coming weeks, and perhaps even tonight, to some degree, the school committee will discuss plans for the hiring of an interim superintendent for the 2020, 2021 academic year, as well as initial plans for the reopening of the search for a permanent superintendent, again, likely to commence in earnest in the fall, but planning for which would, would occur, can occur as soon as, as this group feels is appropriate. On behalf of the Brookline School Committee, I'd like to thank the members of the SPAC and all members of the Brookline Community, Community who provided feedback along the way. There was involvement in this process that I think has never been done before, in terms of the extensiveness of the, the public participation. I think it was, although our, we're suspending the search and, and gonna go out again, I think the process was one that people really appreciated, and hopefully is one that we will emulate in our next reiterate, iteration of this search.
Does anyone have any questions? Then I think probably we should, should we talk now about what, what next, or, I think, yep. So the last, when we did, the last time we were in need of an interim superintendent, we had a subcommittee that, I don't remember the name of the subcommittee, wasn't, it had, did it have an acronym? It might not have even had an acronym. The interim, so the, we had an interim superintendent search committee, we'll just call it that for now. So if my recollection is correct, it was Jennifer, Helen, and David? It was three?
So maybe I just attended. No, you were on it. There was more people.
And so, I would like to propose the, that we recommission the same subcommittee to, to take another, you know, to kind of, and I, and I believe that having the same group of individuals would be the most efficient and effective way, because you had so much discussion about possibilities, really thought through some of the characteristics that we were, are looking, weren't looking at, are looking at, and just that you'd put a lot of effort into that process in considering an interim superintendent. And so, I hate that we're having to ask, you know, it's, we are where we are. And I know that it was a huge time burden the first time around, but here we are again. And so I would ask the four of you if you would be willing to serve on another interim subcommittee. Yes, yes. All right, we're being very efficient to. Although you'll have to meet in person. We, we need to get guidance on whether meetings need to take place in person, or if we're able, able to, they're working on it? Well, some, a quorum in the room. But a quorum of a group of four is three. Okay. All right. So I'll let the, the subcommittee work out the logistics of Zoom, perhaps, or whatever, however they're going to.
I would like to ask also that Lisa Richardson be our staff liaison to this. I think it's really important.
I'll ask Ben that, I'll ask Ben that when Lisa's nodding her willingness. So I will ask Ben when he comes back in the room if, if he is willing to have Lisa serve in that capacity. Yes?
We just need to figure out if staff are gonna.
Well, she would be essential, central, central administration will be in the building until time changes. As of right now, they are still coming to work tomorrow.
Okay, that was my question, was sort of, we didn't really clarify what the delineation of what staff would be available was, and so that was just a concern. And before we get too much farther down this, I, I just wanted to reiterate something that Michael said, which was that I really thought that the process, particularly the, at the Community Advisory Committee part of our subcommittee, was a really great process. It was a really diverse group of people with diverse voices. And so I just, it was a really good process, I thought, that participation. So I just wanted to, just bring that back up again before we start going down a new process. It really was a very enjoyable opportunity and great conversation. And so, when do we want this body to begin its work? Like yesterday, or?
Well, you'll have to notice a meeting for two days, so, you know, perhaps on Tuesday, if possible. Piggyback on our school committee meeting?
Before then, I'm not sure that we'll have, yeah, maybe before then, before we get too far into the other work, we could, I don't, not that I'm looking for more meetings, but.
I, I think, I had actually asked, gotten some information about what, what happens if this were to happen. And from Glenn Kutcher, the MASC person, so there's, there's a number of different pieces. It may be better to talk about it when we're together just doing the, rather than taking our time right now. But there, there are a number of options, from going out for a search now, which I, I think we've all decided was not a good idea, not a good time right now to do that, especially with everything that's going on, even more so.
You mean a search for a new superintendent?
For, for a permanent, correct.
I was, I was actually looking for a little bit of an explanation of what this body, these, these four of us will do as a.
Well, I think it would be similar to what we did the last time. Yes.
I think she's asking you to state.
Absolutely, yes. I think it would be a much more concise.
Window?
Window, much more, more similar to what we did last time, where we, we, we looked for people specifically, we tried to, to get somebody who would be willing to be an interim. I think the one, we, we would probably.
There's not going to be another SPAC.
We would probably want to make a recommendation to the school committee whether or not this person could apply for the job, if it were to be somebody who wasn't retired. So those are the things that I think we would think about in terms of this.
Yes. So I just want to confirm, so just to be clear, for everyone, just so that everybody understands, there's going to be a four-person interim search committee, right? They will be meeting, starting pretty close to effective immediately, as soon as we can start to publicly announce dates. And the, the entire school committee will be, once again, reviewing the criteria, the criteria for the search? Or is there an expectation that we're just going to be re-upping the previous candidate description?
Why don't you, after the first, because maybe we might want to do things, you know, last time, for example, we had said that the interim was not eligible to apply. I don't know, I have no thoughts on it, I have very few, yes, no thoughts on it, but that might be something different. So maybe if the committee, the subcommittee.
I'd even do is ask Glenn to come to our first meeting and talk with us about the different options, because they do that.
And I think that what I would just like to say is that my hope is that it won't just be a re-up of the previous sort of materials that we had and the process that we had, and that we will actually have a chance to do, you know, a good, meaningful process, because we have time to like look for an interim search, an interim search.
I don't think we do.
Yeah, I, I sort of question that about the time.
I mean, it's not July.
No, it's not July. This is true.
So, I mean, in that sense, we have a little bit more time. So, I mean, I think in that sense, I would like to be able to give it, you know, a good, thoughtful set of considerations.
All right, thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have an update on the 2021 budget, and then a proposed executive session. Does anyone have any thoughts on whether that is, that we should be doing that tonight?
A couple of thoughts. First, the last Finance Committee meeting unfortunately did not happen due to a last-minute quorum issue, we didn't have quorum. So, number one, we still need a time for March for the Finance Subcommittee, so after this, we need to get out of our calendars. I would suggest that there are kind of a couple of different processes here. One is really thinking through the different pieces of the budget as, that sort of summarize all of the presentations that we've had for the last number of months in the Finance Subcommittee to understand the different departments and what they do, and just make sure everyone sort of feels comfortable with that. I think there's a second piece of it, which is understanding if there are new investments that people are interested in making, at that point, they would need to be cuts in other areas in order to invest in new things. So we would have to sort of think through that process. And I think there's sort of the overall question of, as we go through this next number of months, what kind of flexible financing we might need, either from within our budget or from outside of our budget, and requests and conversations with other folks in the town about that. So I, my suggestion is that we have the Thursday, the Tuesday meeting first, so that we at least have a range of, a range, an idea of what kinds of things, I think a lot more will be clear on Tuesday, we're even talking about. I think then the Finance Subcommittee needs to meet again to, to do that work that we're supposed to do at the last meeting, which is sort of process that information. And again, new, new things are things like new investments in social and emotional learning, new requests from B-FAG, new, there are lots of new things that people are interested in. So, and then I think at the next meeting that we would come back and, and have that conversation. So that would be my suggestion.
I second that suggestion. Does anyone have any, any thoughts on it?
Well, I, I, I'm just a little nervous. I know how full the next Thursday meeting schedule is.
I wonder if we might, in light of recent developments, I wonder if there are, there are, there might be doing some reevaluating of, I think we might be doing reevaluating of what it is that we're accomplishing on what timelines, perhaps.
I'm just worried we, we're really bumping up against some kind of a deadline here, and we're just not gonna have the opportunity. I'm not suggesting we stay till 11, but maybe 9:00 or something, just to get a start on some of this.
I also think that it would be helpful, I guess what's going on in my mind is that it might require additional funds to, that we do not currently have anticipated, to do some of the things that we think might need to be done during this closure. So if we have strong feelings about supporting our families who are low-income, and we, and meal, you know, food insecurity, or whatever it may be, there might be financial implications to that. Some, maybe they can be done within the existing contract, maybe it'd be, we don't know, right? Same thing with childcare for, you know, subsidized childcare, you know, there are so many things that are floating around right now as ideas. It just seems to me that until we have a slightly better picture of that, it would just.
But that's this year's.
No, no, I know, but that affects next year's budget also. Right, and so, when you say, well, let me ask, let me ask this a question. When you say running up against a deadline, what are you worried about?
When is it that we have to absolutely, what's a drop date for approving the budget?
July 1st, like this.
Yeah, so the, you know, we have the, yeah, usually what we tend, what we try to do is we try to, and the budget just changes every week, every year for the last, from infinity, right? So it just, it just does. So I think the question is, do we, we try to sort of lock it down at different points in time, like here's the point in time, just like we do, I sort of compare it to enrollment. Sometimes enrollment changes every day, there's a different number of kids in our buildings, but on October 1, that's what we kind of mark to, so.
And if I, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You look very insistent. And so what we try to do is, given that we have the bylaw of having to vote the full number, we try to meet that. But then what happens is the, because the advisory committee process and the town review process of our budget and in light of everybody else's budget, because that whole process tends to start, I mean, now, really. Well, maybe, I mean, yes. Yes, I mean, so I, I assume that one is still on, and I assume it's still essential. Yeah, it's on until it's not. I think we, I think all the boards and commissions are waiting for guidance about whether or not they are still meeting. I think that's still changing. But it does seem that there is sort of a moment in the March-April timeframe where we should be able to be clear enough so that we can at least give that direction to, to the rest of the town, just, again, cognizant that, that this will have ripple, that this will have ripple effect, so.
And the other piece is if there are any layoffs or, you know, people not being rehired, we need to let them know. And remind me again the date, I think it's May 15th, is.
On renewal?
The date, the date that we need to let staff know if there were any reductions in force or, or layoffs.
So each contract is going to be different, and it goes on a line, people may have a different game in their contract?
Right. Okay, but for, for the.
In general, I would say obviously the sooner the better, but.
Right. May 1st, thank you. So that's another timeline. So I was wrong about July 1st.
Talking about, as Chair of Negotiations Committee, can you put this, I mean, I, it's, we've tried so hard to come up with what you, what we need on that committee to go forward. Can we postpone that conversation tonight? That's what I'm asking. You think you've got it?
Quite frankly, I don't, with all due respect, I'm not sure this is a conversation for open session. I think this is a conversation for executive session. Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate to, it's certainly appropriate to have. Yeah, I think it's appropriate to, it's certainly appropriate to have the executive session.
Well, that's what Julie's asking, whether we want the executive session tonight or not.
I was assuming we were having it tonight.
I thought she was asking me if there was any more update on the 2021 budget.
I think she asked generally. I do think there's some clarity.
Oh, really?
She was saying, what do we want to cover tonight?
Oh.
So there's general agreement that we wanted to have the executive session. I do, before we move. Yeah, that's what I think she was asking, and so that's what.
I think, I didn't get that. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Maybe I, sorry.
It's okay.
She sent me a little note that said, you think we're going to close tonight, or should we go on?
Okay, got it.
Okay. So I guess we weren't clear about that at all. Jennifer.
So I am concerned that we would be sending a budget to advisory that we really have not gone through.
No, I don't think we would. No, we wouldn't.
Well, so, all right, so that's the clarity, that's the clarity I'm seeking, is there's a meeting, a potential, whether or not that gets canceled. There was, would have been an anticipated budget sent to advisory, and I think it would be really important for them to understand that we haven't gone through that. Like, there has been no consensus or discussion about those items. So we would not then be, even if they met, we would not send a budget?
I think we would, it would seem to me that the important thing to do would be to talk through the conversation, just sort of, there's so much that has happened that it's important for the full advisory committee subcommittee on schools to understand, that I think it can be a very robust discussion about what, about where we are.
Yeah, because we've, we need to have a significant amount of conversation before we're ready to determine the budget. I think we're far from that at this point. Okay. So that's my concern. So I just want to make sure that we're not sending anything out that we have not had time to go through. Okay.
So, so if we think, if we understand, we were confused about what you were asking for, Julie, but it seems to be a consensus that we do expect to go into executive session tonight.
Okay. I was asking about that, yes. So we will, but Ben had planned, Ben had planned a budget presentation. I think that it would be best at this moment, with change in budgets, to forego that presentation. We have a need for executive session. I can make that motion. We can have, all right, is that my understanding? All right. So I'm going to make a motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes, we're not doing that, so I can say it. So approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, September 26, October 2, October 10, and November 4. We have to do a roll call vote.
Ms. Garfield?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. McLeod?
Yes.
Ms. Calhoun?
Yes.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Yes.
Ms. Schindler?
Yes. All right. So we will be moving into executive session, and we will not be going, returning into open session.